Okay, all right, so. All right, everybody, Monday, May 4th, 2020, welcome to Clarence Board of Education's regularly scheduled meeting. Just to note before we go in, due to Governor's proclamation on mass gatherings, we are conducting this meeting virtually with all board members in attendance and all approving meeting in this quorum. With that, I'll walk right into the agenda. First up is roll call. We have all seven board members in attendance. Matt Stock, Tricia Andrews, Dennis Prieri, James Boglioli, Dawn Snyder, Mary Beth Sweeney, and myself, Mike Fuchs. In addition, we have Superintendent Dr. Jeff Hicks, Mr. Mancuso, we have Mrs. Overhold, Mrs. Overhold is there, and Mr. Michelle. And with that, any announcements before we move forward with approval of the agenda?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Do I have a second? And a second, all right? And again, we'll do roll call just to reach vote. All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I am an a as well. So in our packet, we have the meeting minutes from our last virtual board meeting from April 6th. Is there any questions on the minutes from April 6th?
No.
Okay, okay. Could I get a motion to approve said minutes? So moved?
So moved. Second.
All right, second, all right. So all those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James? Aye. Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I am an a as well. And we have no correspondence to note and no member of the public present to ask questions at this time. Any unfinished business before we move into the superintendent's report? All right, Dr. Hicks, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see the PowerPoint thing?
Yes.
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 So we'll go through this, and Rick's going to just chime in when necessary, and please ask any questions that you have. We wanted to give you an update on the COVID-19 situation across New York State and something that was brand new as of Friday afternoon, information on the budget vote, Board of Education election. Also, we want to talk a little bit at the end very quickly about the status of the New York State budget. The governor has yet to come out with his revenue projections or potential cuts. So first, a little bit of information on COVID-19. On Friday, the governor issued an executive order closing schools for the remainder of the academic year. One thing we don't know yet is when the final day of school is. If the board members recall, we need to have students in classes for at least 180 days. Those 180 days were waived during this period of remote instruction, but we're not sure exactly when the governor is going to enunciate what the very last day is. When he does that, we will work backward from that particular day. We anticipate getting that information within a week or so. Second thing, the executive order reemphasized was that everyone in New York State had to wear face masks in public. Also, the governor talked a little bit about COVID-19 antibody testing, about 15% of the population has COVID-19 antibodies of those who have been tested. So the governor today came up with additional guidance for reopening. Schools are going to have to create a reentry plan. We are in the process of creating our plan. As we move through the plan, we will give it and show it to the Board of Education for some feedback. We'll also have a way to get feedback from our staff members through the department chairs and also through our administrators. Before a business could reopen, there needs to be a 14-day decline in hospitalizations. So that has happened in some portion of the states, and in other portions of the state it has not happened. There can be no statistically significant increase in hospitalization and testing. There needs to be at least 30% of hospital and ICU beds available. The governor is saying that before he will let businesses start back up, there has to be 30,000 tests per month and a tracing system with at least 30 tracers per 100,000 people. Also, social distancing and monitoring has to stay in place. Former Mayor Bloomberg from New York City is in charge of the tracing, contact tracing system, and supposedly that will also include Western New York. So once that begins, we're hopeful that we can get our 12-month employees to start to work on a daily basis over the summer. I'll just stop at that right there for just a second and ask if there's any questions so far.
Just, this is probably a we don't know yet, but when you're talking about significant increase, that's a trigger for reopening. Is there any guidance that they've given about if that opening process starts a spike in hospitalization? Do they, are they going to pull back, or is that unclear at this point?
From what the governor has said in his press conference, if we drop the threshold of 30% hospital beds available, and that would include with elective surgeries, then there would be a considerable of going back into a lockdown situation.
Got it, thanks.
All right, I'm gonna keep rocking.
Can you, I'm sorry.
I'm playing.
Just real quick, the reentry plan for schools, can you just maybe touch on some of the elements that they're expecting us to have in there, given their shifting expectations over time?
We have not received any guidance on it as of yet, and we anticipate giving, getting some. However, what we have so far in our, in our reentry plan is operational aspects, academic aspects, social, emotional health aspects, and just general kind of cleaning, medical, et cetera, captain, who's going to wear a mask, that kind of thing. So our anticipation is that before the beginning of the summer, we will get discrete guidelines on what needs to be in the plan. We've had to hand in three plans already, one for food service, one for childcare, and most recently, we had to do it again for the continuity of instruction. So we're anticipating we'll have to do it through the portal in the New York State Education Department website, and it will have to include pieces, but I don't think they're sure yet about the kind of pieces that it needs to include.
Jeff, are we working with BOCs on any of, any of these plans?
What we've gotten from BOCs, from the, the 20 BOCs across the state is they put together a document with prompts under big headings of things to think about for reopening. So we do meet as a BOC three times per week as superintendents, and that's where we get most of the information from SED.
Thank you.
Any other questions so far? Okay. The governor will have phases for reopening. Phase one will start after the 15th of May, and it will include constructing and manufacturing functions that have low risk and are able to hopefully distance their employees. Phase two would happen a couple of weeks after that, and that's why we're thinking that by mid-June, there will be many things reopen in New York State, and we'll be able to rethink getting our employees back into the buildings as well, even if there's no kids. So businesses that are considered more essential with inherent low risks would come first in phase two, followed by other less essential businesses that have a higher risk. And as the infection rate declines, the pace of reopening increases. So the governor says there are two weeks between each phase to monitor the effects of reopening and ensure that things are not increasing. So that's what we know so far about the COVID stuff. Now, this was very surprising. The governor did not speak about it in his press conference, but he did release an executive order on Friday around 5:00 in the afternoon. So here's what we know so far on the budget vote and school board elections, and Rick, please chime in whenever you need to.
Okay.
First thing is, the statewide school budget vote is now set for June 9th, 2020. That means we're going to have to have a budget hearing prior to that vote, and we will have to establish a board meeting on June 1st of 2020 in order to have that budget hearing. It's called an adjourned budget hearing because the original one was established for today, I believe.
Correct.
And we're adjourning it and doing it on June 1st instead. So hopefully, board members are available, we'll do it remotely. It has to be done remotely. And the school vote for both Board of Election and for the budget will be conducted entirely by absentee ballot. So the district has to prepare and mail absentee ballots to all qualified voters. We're unsure how we're supposed to determine who all the qualified voters are, but we will get an Excel spreadsheet from the Board of Election with names and addresses. Then it, it's my understanding it will be up to us to print the ballot, mail the ballot, and have included with the ballot a postage-paid return envelope. So the ballot must include the pre-postage paid return envelope, the identity of the date of the election, which is June 9th, the date of the budget hearing, which is June 1st, and a definition of a qualified voter.
Each one of those things is something that we always do for every absentee ballot, except the return postage.
So it could cost us close to $60,000 to mail and have a return postage for the 20-some-odd-thousand people we believe we're going to have to mail it to. You want to chime in on that, Rick?
Yeah, when we, since we have voter registration, we know every year it's right around 22,000 people in those ballot books that you see at the vote every May. So we know those people are qualified voters. What we don't know, and we may not have guidance going forward, but are there other qualified voters that we would mail an absentee ballot to? And if so, how are we going to know that?
For example, seniors in high school who have turned 18 and have not voted before. They would be qualified voters. They normally would vote by walking down to the gym and doing an affidavit ballot. Unknown as to whether or not we're going to be able to get ballots to that particular section, but there's things like that that may prove to be semi-problematic.
What is our cost to have someone come in? Do we have to break up this from the Board of Elections? Do we have a?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the question.
I asked, what was the cost normally to have an election?
The cost for the election is pretty minimal, you know, because we, we don't have to do those absentee ballots, we don't get charged for those, and the postage for the about 300 that we end up sending out is going to be much lower than the 22,000.
We don't have to pay for the voting machines, Dawn. The Board of Elections provide those to us, and the vote inspectors that we have for the regular vote are volunteers.
Right. So I guess it sounds sense for us to get a permit that would only charge us postage if it was actually returned.
Yeah, there may be a way to print a barcode on the envelope to have that occur.
I believe there is. We definitely should look into that.
We, we already have that. When we mail census cards out, we mail them to literally every resident, but we know that only a few hundred come back. So the permit that we have will be along those lines. It's not, the ones that come back are actually higher priced than the normal postage. So you, you take the chance a little bit, but I, I think my best guess would also be along those lines that we're not going to get 22,000 returned.
Okay, thank you.
Can some request ballots? Like, like, let's say that senior in high school, can they request a ballot if they don't think they're on that list?
As far as I understand, that, that part hasn't changed, so anybody who actually requests an absentee ballot, we certainly would still mail it to them.
And can you speak to the ballot itself? Is it going to be similar to what you would typically mail in that the compilation when they all come back is going to be very manual?
The ballot will be identical to what you normally see when you vote. The reason it will be is most likely, but the Board of Elections hasn't decided yet, most likely they will still give us the machines so that we're not doing a manual count.
That's something.
So the ballot must be printed on 70-pound paper in a very specific way, and we're going to make sure that it is completely correct. All right, we're going to keep, keep going. Some other things that were in the executive order. Normally, we would have to have four legal notices for the budget vote. This time, because of the truncated nature, there's going to be two. The first notice is no later than May 12th, and the last notice has to happen prior, at least a week prior to the budget vote. Am I correct on that, Rick?
Yes. We would anticipate May 12th and May 26th for the Buffalo News, and May 13th and May 27th for the B.
The property tax report card is due on May 22nd. We've already voted on our budget, we're at the cap level. That really won't change regardless of what the governor does with cuts. So the property tax report card is a simplistic thing to complete. Anything else on that, Rick?
No.
Jeff, I have a question. Are we still mailing out the usual budget newsletter?
We are, Dennis. That's going to count as one of our mailings.
Okay.
And I think I shared it with you a couple of weeks ago, but I will reshare it with you on Friday. We may want to pare it down slightly.
Right.
We're, we're, Rick and I are rethinking that, so we'll let you know what it's going to look like Friday.
Okay.
Because we'd like to get your approval. There's a message from the Board of Ed in there, and there's a bunch of facts and figures about the budget. If the governor comes out with his, with, we can include some of that information if it's germane. Okay. Some other things that are very different. The minimum threshold of signatures has been eliminated for any Board of Ed candidate. So as long as they meet the deadline, which is May 11th, anyone can self-nominate as a candidate for the Board of Education. Our anticipation is, because Dawn and Tricia have already met the previous standard of signature requirements, that they wouldn't have to do anything different. Am I correct in that, Rick?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So the other requirements for being a BOE candidate still apply. You had to have been a resident for, well, do you know those, Rick, off the top of your head?
You have to have been a resident for one year prior to the vote and a U.S. citizen, basically.
It also says you have to read and write, but we're going to anticipate everyone who runs for the board can do that. Also, the Board of Edu candidate, Ed candidates, normally we would have a draw that would determine the listing on the ballot, but the executive order makes it clear that it must now be listed alphabetically.
And Jeff, for the self-nomination, is that just a letter to, to Rick, or?
Yes, and what we're considering is to just have that letter notarized somehow, just to make sure that there's a level of seriousness to it. Rick, can you address that?
Yeah, and I, you know, what we, what we think should happen is the letter should state that you do meet the qualifications to run for the school board, and obviously you have to put your address on there, that's part of it that we will check out. And, and I, and I think it is a good idea to have it notarized, just so that somebody else has looked at it, since the requirement isn't to show up and come in.
I'm just going to say it out loud. In, in the current situation, a notary might be a difficult thing.
Right.
To get your, to get your hands on, and I, I wouldn't want to be accused, we should look into it with our attorneys, of in some way limiting who could, you know, now that they changed the law, limiting who could sign up. I just think, you know, if he doesn't open notaries, that's professional services, I'd say that's probably round two, but people might not be able to get a notary. I, I, for work to get a notary, I have to drop something at work and have one of our paralegals pick it up and notarize it, leave it back, you know? She can't stand there with me.
I think it is a good idea to check with the attorneys. The idea of notarizing, obviously, is so that somebody can't, there's somebody else and have somebody on the ballot that really didn't. So we, we need some kind of checking on it.
Rick, the banks and credit unions are essential businesses, so they are open with notaries, and you can make appointments for those services.
We also, we have several, I am one, but we have several notaries here too, so that if somebody doesn't come in, we, we can take care of it.
Well, we'll check it, James, that's a good.
I, I'm not saying, I just, I would hate to be accused of saying, you know, this is a requirement in the law, we added it, and someone could claim we're trying to, you know, restrict who can sign up, just a concern.
You know, it wouldn't be our intention to do that, so thank you.
No.
Couple of open questions that have yet to be answered, and we're guessing that there'll be a little bit more guidance on this, although the turnaround time is extraordinarily swift for us to do things. It really is not clear how we will identify all the qualified voters in a district to whom absentee ballots need to be sent, and we're going to do our best, but we might miss some people if they don't specifically request a ballot. The executive order doesn't specify, although there are historical things to some of these bulleted points, but the executive order doesn't specify when the district should send out the absentee ballots and the accompanying postcard notice. The absentee ballots, there is a timeline for military ballots that are May, that is May 15th. We're assuming that that's the same time, but we, it doesn't state it specifically within the executive order. Am I right on that, Rick?
Yes, and, and it is kind of odd because the military ballot is just an absentee ballot sent to the, the list that we get that are in the military. So there is an assumption that you have to have the absentee ballot ready by May 15th to send it out to those people. So that's what, short of further guidance, that's what we'll, we'll, we'll do. And the postcard is always the day after the budget hearing, so we'll plan on mailing it June 2nd.
It is also in the executive order not specified when the second school vote notice must happen. However, we're already anticipating that we're going to do that on the 26th of May. Also, the procedures for the adjourned budget hearing, other than the fact that it'll be virtual, are not created. However, we've done lots of budget hearings in the past. It's just a simple presentation and a nod of the head that doesn't even have to be acted on as a formal resolution by the board. But normally, there would be people in the audience with questions, so we'll either, we're going to have to have them submit them in advance. We already have that on our website, and I've already redone the budget page to include this new information. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I didn't, I, I thought you were finished. My, my question on the kind of unanswered question is, do the board candidates still need to follow the financial disclosure mechanisms, or was that also waived?
Yeah, that's a really good one, Matt. It, it did, the executive order is moot, mute on that particular question, but our anticipation is they would have to follow it. I don't know how they would possibly spend, is it 500 bucks, Rick, that you have?
Yeah.
I don't know how they do that, but we're thinking that that is in there. What do you think, Rick?
I, I think if he doesn't waive it, that it's just automatically going to be in there. So we'll come up with the, the three deadlines for that also.
Okay, thanks.
It doesn't specifically state in the executive order who shall be present to count the vote and announce the details. And again, we really need the Board of Elections to get us a couple of voting machines. We could have a large number of ballots, ballots back, or a short amount of, we have no idea, this has never been done before, and it might be very, very simple for people who've never voted before at all to just bubble in something on a ballot and send it back to us. So we could literally have more ballots than we've ever had before, and we need the machine to count it, and normally, we have an attorney here to announce the details and verify the vote. We're going to do the same thing. Am I correct in that, Rick?
Yes, we, we already named the person who would be the chairperson of the vote, and I'm just going to confirm that she's also available on this date.
Rick, I have a question, because in the executive order, I didn't think it was clear who was counting the vote. Did something else come out after that?
No, I, I don't, you know, they've never identified who counts the vote other than vote-appointed inspectors. So that is the same that, you know, without changing it. So we're going to go along those lines, and naturally, as Dr. Hicks mentioned, you know, we're in contact with every other district, but that didn't seem to change.
So I do, I do know that a New York State School Board, or Erie County School Board email came out, and they said that there is a lot of confusion on that, and they were requesting clarification from the governor on, on where, who actually counts the vote.
Yeah, we really think it is going to be the inspectors, but it does not say exactly in the executive order.
And Jeff.
And this is a, I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, finish.
The last thing is, we don't know what is supposed to happen if, God forbid, the budget is defeated. Normally, there's an opportunity for a second vote, but there, it, again, the executive order does not have any information on that particular possibility.
Okay, Jeff, now, they say the vote is June 9th, but it's by mail. I mean, is that going to say it has, will they say it has to be postmarked by June 9th, and will you be still counting after that?
Yes, Dennis, we do believe that the variable is postmarked by June 9th.
Okay.
And we think we could be counting for up to a week after, depending upon how quickly some of those things get back to the school.
Okay.
So it's not going to be like it normally is, where that night, we have a definitive yes or no.
Yeah.
Anything else on that, Rick?
No, I think that's good.
You know, the chances of a huge, if, if there's a large spread, I think we can speculate, but we just don't know.
Yeah.
Next thing on your slide presentation is just a number of important dates that we need to meet, and again, this is very close. Luckily, we're ahead of the game on many things, thanks to Rick and his usual good job of doing things, but these are the deadlines that we absolutely know about. Go ahead, please.
Jeff, it's Dawn. I just, I guess I just wanted to, to thank you and, and Mr. Mancuso for doing such a good job when you really don't have the facts to even know what you're doing, so I do appreciate all the effort you're putting into this.
Thanks, Dawn.
Fair times.
Just a couple of last things on where the budget is and why the federal bailout is so critical to not just next year's budget, but 21, 22. So some economic predictions, some things that came out in the governor's most recent budget report. I guess officially, we're in recession at this point, both globally and in the United States. Total New York State wages are expected to fall by 7.2%. New York State personal income and wages fall by 2.2. The financial and insurance sector bonuses, the Wall Street bonuses, which is 25% of the budget, are supposed to drop by 50%, and unemployment in New York State at about 11.5% higher than any other time and any other recorded level. Some revenue information, general fund receipts, we think Cuomo has quoted 13.3 billion. Remember, it was going to be between $10 and $15 billion short on receipts. Compared to last year, that's a drop of about 8.9% predicted, and when you put in the money that we've already received in the first bailout, it's about a $12.5 billion hole for New York State. There is a mechanism that authorizes the budget director of the governor to make cuts in three different measurement periods. The first measurement period ended on April 30th. We were hopeful that today we would We were hopeful that today we would hear about what the recommended cuts are. Uh, I'm sure it will come this week at some point. Once the budget director makes those recommendations for cuts, the plan goes to the legislature. The legislature needs to act on it within 10 days. If they don't act on it within 10 days, then the recommendations of the governor become the law. So we're anxiously awaiting to see what that will be. Um, we think that it's going to be, uh, based on the numbers that came out in the budget report, at least an $8.2 billion, uh, reduction in aid to localities, which includes schools. So the Department of Budget is preparing a detailed plan on the reductions. And in the absence of federal aid, everything funded by New York State is likely to face steep cuts. Schools and school aid are about 27% of the total overall New York State budget. The only thing larger is Medicaid. Again, these are just some numbers that the governor threw out in the last, um, in the last economic projection that he did. You know, lots of losses, lots of debt. And where it comes out is if it cuts foundation aid, these are some of the estimates that we have. Remember, there's really two kinds of aid that we get. We get expense-based aids based on what we've already spent, um, the previous year. And then we get foundation aid, which is just general purpose money. The general purpose money for Clarence is about $14 million. So if the governor was to cut 20% of foundation aid, that would be about a $2.8 million cut for us. If he was to cut 30% of foundation aid, that would be about a $4.2 million cut. So that's where we, we anticipated it's going to be someplace in that range when the governor first comes out. Now, he also may wait if there is a, a pending bill before the federal government to bail out states. There's a big political argument about it right now. And the Senate doesn't want to necessarily get involved with it and the House of Representatives does want to get involved with it. So we don't know politically whether or not there will be a bailout. And if there isn't, then it's just going to affect the kinds of things we can do on Clarence. So Luke, do you have any, any comment on the New York State budget stuff?
No.
Well.
O- other than, um, if, if, at this point in time, doesn't affect our budget going forward. Um, we, we are not going over the tax cap, so as long as we're under the tax cap, um, our budget is, is sound and it does have the flexibility. Part of, um, uh, what you didn't mention is that there is a restoration piece to it also. If the economy does pick up, we can restore the aid.
So, I mean, I'm just thinking about what 20% means. Uh, I, I mean, that, that's rolling us back, what, uh, six or more years of, of, you know, uh, adjustments in our, in our taxes? And, I mean, how many, how, it, it, I know that it would be a mix of different things, but I mean, that, that seems like a substantial staff cut to, to take all in, all in one year.
Well, one of the things that we want to just have everybody remember is that we have unappropriated fund balance that we could utilize to close that gap. Plus, we will have a surplus at the end of the school year, given what's happened with the COVID-19 epidemic. And money that gets held over from one year, the surplus is another way for us to stop the gap. Of course, those are kind of one shots. Um, they would only help for a year, but there's likely enough dollars in the, uh, unappropriated fund balance to have some multiple-year goals. Do you want to address that at all, Rick?
We are just going to have to do a, a very detailed analysis, excuse me, at every cut that, that takes place and see where we are and see how much our fund balance can cover. Um, you know, depending on the federal bailout monies, um, it, it might not be as bad as it looks for next year. Um, certainly I'm concerned about 21, 22.
Scored there? Okay, that makes sense.
So Mike, that concludes the superintendent's report.
If you'd Dr. Hicks.
If I could just add, I'd encourage everyone to still lobby for that federal aid to New York State. Um, you know, it's, uh, that, that could be up to $7 million. That would be devastating. And, and, you know, I think the state and, and all school districts really need that. So I would encourage everyone, there's, there's a lot of ways to do that. The New York State School Boards Association has a letter. Uh, you just simply log in, sign your name and email it. And there's, there's many ways to do it, but I would encourage everyone to do that.
Thank you, Dennis. And just to clarify, uh, Dr. Hicks, on the advocacy page of the district website, you did send a letter already, correct?
Yes, I sent a letter on behalf of the board. Um, also, uh, many teachers and administrators copied and pasted that letter. And it also got out to all the PTOs through Chris Brophy. So we think we had a pretty good response to it.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions before we move on in the agenda?
No.
Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Mancuso, finance reports.
Uh, very brief tonight, we caught up and we are, uh, submitting the January and February financial reports. And the only other item, um, is to accept the petitions from Tricia Andrews and Don Snyder. Uh, they met the other qualification of having verified signatures. So they are valid candidates for this election. Uh, I did submit the calendar that we were working on, which is now garbage. And the new one that Dr. Hicks, um, just reviewed is, is what we will use going forward.
Any questions on the financial reports? Uh, seeing no questions, uh, if I could get a motion to approve items F1 and F2, which would be the January and February 2012, 2020 financial reports, as well as the approval of the Board of Ed candidate petitions for Tricia and Don.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor going down, uh, Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye, sorry.
Okay, uh, Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Hi.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. All right, uh, personnel, uh, Mr. Michelle, instructional?
Instructional for this evening, we have one resignation from a stipend position. P2 contains two requests for leave of working for next year. P3 are two returns from leaves of absence. Um, I apologize, P4 contains appointments that should have been up for your approval previously. Uh, these are monies that we would pay out for the musical that actually already happened this year. Um, P5 is an approval for professional development courses being provided. In this case, all of them were by Dr. Kotlick, so thank you, Dr. Kotlick. And P6 has the tenure approval for the three teachers that were up for your review, uh, last meeting.
Thank you. Uh, any questions on instructional? No, hearing none. Go, go ahead.
I have just one quick question, um, but it, it has to do with the tenure letters that we normally get at this meeting. Will we be getting those at some point, not for the actual, uh, tenure appointments that you're asking us to approve, but for?
The continuation letters?
Continuation letters?
Yes, you will have those next month.
Right, thank you.
Uh, no other questions? Can I get a motion to approve P1 to P6?
I'll make a motion.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, uh, Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. All right, uh, Mr. Michelle, non-instructional?
Uh, non-instructional is very brief this evening. It, it applies to the same employee. Uh, that person continued their medical leave of absence after our board meeting when we had met. That had resolved itself and she is now requesting to come back to employment. So P7 and P8 are both for the same employee now returning to work.
Okay. Uh, if no questions, could I get a motion to approve P7 and P8?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, uh, Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Uh, thank you, Mr. Michelle. Uh, Dr. Hicks, special needs and student activities?
Um, 79 CSE meetings, 29 CPSC meetings. I just want to say thank you to Mary Ellen, Mary Jo, our psychologists, our counselors. People have really stepped up to an employee to continue to do these meetings. It would have been a nightmare to try to do all of these meetings after the fact with school closing down for the rest of the year. So they've done a great job. Parents have been involved, kids have been involved. It's, it's gone very well.
That's great to hear. Certainly not the most ideal of, uh, conditions. Is there any, uh, questions on S1 or S2? No, hearing none. Could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. Or second.
Dennis, thank you. Uh, who has a second?
I think Matt.
All righty, uh, I have a motion and a second, uh, roll call, uh, for approval. Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Dawn was an I, Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't hear me.
Thank you, Dawn. Uh, Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Okay, we have, uh, one item under board, uh, development and policy.
Um, when the governor's budget was adopted, it included a provision that we no longer have to give employees three hours off during the day to vote before or after they come to work. So moving the staff development day is a good idea. Kristen, you want to explain why?
Sure, um, we just, in, in looking at next year, uh, we think it's imperative that we're able to maximize those three addition, three days at the start of, the beginning of, uh, September. Also by moving it up, uh, that, that second, um, staff development day from November 3rd to October 23rd. Again, just gives us, uh, critical time that we're going to need at the start of the school year, uh, with our teachers.
All right, thank you. So any questions, uh, concerning the calendar change? Hearing none, could I get a motion to approve item B1?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. All right, uh, all those in favor, uh, Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Um, be- before I entertain a motion to adjourn to the executive session, just a, a question. Um, there was a comment earlier about us having to, uh, have the adjourned budget meeting on June 1st. Is that a, do we have to formally establish that here or the, when will that communication go out?
We already have it on the website, Mike. Um, we have it on the budget website. We have it on the, we'll have it in the Board of Ed, uh, Minutes website. Uh, I'll include it also, the next communication that we do with parents. We're going to have some communication on end of the year activities at all levels. I'm not just talking about graduation. Um, so we'll get the word out about the meeting. Um, can I just ask, are, are people available on June 1st?
I'm good.
Yep.
Let me check. I don't know where else to go. I'm not going anywhere. I'm good.
If, if, if you wouldn't, if you wouldn't mind, I, I think it is a good idea to actually have a motion to establish that date. That's something that we're required to do and we did establish May 4th as the date. Um, it will be in the notification that we have to send to the B and to the Buffalo News. But I do think it is a good idea to do that.
Okay, so just, uh, I'll, I'll make a stab at it and correct me if I use the wrong terminology, but, uh, we would need a motion to, uh, set our adjourned budget hearing date, uh, from Monday, June 1st, uh, 2027 PM. Uh, we'll do it virtually, uh, just like this and we'll solicit questions through the website from, um, uh, district members.
Correct.
Okay. Can, can I get a motion to approve the establishment of that meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, all those in favor, uh, Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. Okay, um, any other questions before we take a motion to adjourn?
Mike, I have a, a question and a comment. Um, my first question to Jeff and Rick. Normally, board members would have to provide a 225-word, um, document. Is that still required or not?
It's, it's not required, but we, we did want to include it in our newsletter.
Okay, so you were, okay, so that, okay, thank you on that. And then the other thing that I, I just wanted to bring up, and I know it is kind of a little bit of old business, but we had had, um, previously, a community, community member come with, um, talking about bringing therapy dogs in. And, and my reason for bringing this up now is I think that as a board and as a district, we're going to have to look at ways that we can bring in services or mental help with the mental health aspect of things by services that are at little or no cost to us. So at this point, I'd like to maybe be able to go back and, and look at that and address that again. I know that now isn't, today is not the day, but maybe if we could think about ways to actually get outside organizations involved, because it would be at little or no cost and the benefit would be great to our students.
Weren't we thinking about getting a committee going on that eventually?
On therapy dogs?
No, just, uh, no, just on, um, ways to supplement any kind of mental health services. I think it came up at our teacher, for, um, our teacher forum.
Right. We'll have a piece, one of the sections of the reentry plan is going to have social emotional supports in it. So again, if we can get to the point, Rick has done some research on therapy dogs. We can get, when it's time to talk about it again, we'll, we'll bring that. That's one idea. Dawn's idea is multifaceted. It's not just dogs. We'll have emotional, social emotional supports in the reentry plan. If we're, we'll show you those things in advance. If you think we need more information, we'll, we'll go after it.
And maybe that's something, Jeff, where we could get Kevin involved and, and see what, because I know he has his advisory board for the Family Support Center. Maybe he can reach out to them virtually and that would be a good place to start.
Yep, that's a good idea, Dawn.
The only other thing, Jeff, that I, I'd just like to bring really quick is, and I know we never got to it because everything happened, but looking at the sports, um, the, the proposal that, um, Mr. Haliba brought, I don't want that to get, get pushed by the wayside because I know we are going to set up a committee for that as well.
We, we had, we had members of the committee, um, considered, not appointed yet. Uh, we, as soon as we can get the go-ahead to get people back in person, uh, we'll, we'll get jumping again on that, on that topic. Uh, I don't know if it'll occur before the beginning of next year. That was the goal and we, you know, we had this emergency. But we will get that committee together and have it running. Jason Lembeck will be in charge.
Super, thank you.
I'm just going to add, um, sorry, Mary Beth. Um, me is mental health awareness month and our, uh, psychologists, our counselors, um, Kevin Modlmeier, the Family Support Center. Kevin Motelmeier, the Family Support Center Coordinator, they've put together a wealth of resources for our families, for our faculty and our students that are now posted on our district website that everyone in the community has access to.
And I guess I should, I guess I should also say that CSUP, in coordination with the Family Support Center, has been soliciting donations to help the Clarence families in need. Those, those funds go directly to the district and Kevin for distribution. So I'd like to thank everybody that's contributed so far. It's been quite a success. Okay, I'm good.
Did I see that the high school won a recognition, an award?
Well, New York State identified the high school as a recognition school.
Okay.
It's one of the top high schools in New York State. We would have had more schools recognized, but we didn't meet the 95% test requirement at our elementary or our middle school. We're pretty sure-
Yeah, I mean, the, I think too, thinking of it, that the elementary provides such a good foundation with, for our kids academically, socially, and emotionally, that they move up to the high school and they thrive there. So I, I just read that, so I just wanted to congratulate and acknowledge them for that.
Well said.
Thank you. All right, anybody else have any other closing comments before we adjourn? Hearing none, would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person? Do I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mike.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tricia. All right, all those in favor for adjourned, Matt?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Dawn?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We are all adjourned tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.